I will call to order this regular meeting of the San Marcos City Council. Today is Wednesday, November 6th. The time is 6:00 PM. Mr. Trevino, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Prather.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Hi.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We have a corn present.
Okay, and our invocation this evening is being given by Mr. Mike Hollifield, who is a chaplain with our San Marcos Police Department. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. If you feel comfortable, please bow your head and join us in prayer. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight. We are grateful for our great nation, our state, and our city. We are grateful for our elected officials, the businesses, the churches, families, and individuals who make San Marcos a wonderful place to live. We lift up our mayor, our city council, our city manager, city leaders and staff. Thank you for their hard work and dedication. Grant them wisdom, strength, and courage to lead our city skillfully. May they bring forward creative solutions to the challenges we face. Bless them with an understanding of the true needs and well-being of the people of San Marcos. Give them the ability to work together in unity even in times of honest disagreement. Lastly, Lord, we ask that you bring peace that surpasses all understanding to their lives, to their families, and to their homes. Amen.
Next is the pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. And first up is our citizen comment time period. We do hear citizen comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. Those wishing to speak during this time period, there is a sign-up requirement and process. You may speak once during citizen comment, may not yield time to others. If there is a public hearing on tonight's agenda and you wish to speak on that, I ask that you not repeat exactly the same comments again from citizen comment during the public hearing on the same topic. You have three minutes to speak when you state your name. A timer is displayed on the screen. You'll start in the green. When you get into the yellow, you'll only have 20 seconds or less left. When the timer is red, your time to speak is up and a bell will ring. The mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. If you do any of those, you will hear the gavel, and I will ask you to leave the council chambers. This is your warning. We have, this evening, Mr. Billy Ray Callahan has signed up to speak.
Hello. My name is, my name is Billy Ray Callahan and live at 740 Center Street here in San Marcos, Texas. And first, let me congratulate you, Mayor, for being our mayor once again. And this is to the following personnel. Number one, Mayor Jane Houston. Number two, Amanda Hunandis for Planning and Development Service Director. And then number three, Jamie Lee Chase for Parks and Recreation Director. And number four, Allison Brake, Historian Preservation Officer. Number five, Carol Griffith of Housing and Rehabilitation Program. And number six is Mike Wills, Contractor for Jackson Chapel United Methodist Church. And the buildings for restorations are, is the home economic building at Dunbar. Number two, my house at 740 Center Street. Number three, my church, Jackson Chapel United Methodist Church. Number four, the, the old First Baptist Church at MLK and Comanche Street. And finally, my request for a additional name for the William Doc Bullison House. And I'm, am available for comments at, at the end of this meeting.
Ms. Trevino, I believe Mr. Callahan was the only person signed up?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, then we will move on to the consent agenda. The following ordinances, resolutions, and other items numbered one through 11 may be acted on by one motion unless council members pull these items. And I'm going to pull item four and 10. Council, do y'all have, y'all have any items to pull?
If possible, Mayor, can we do a voice vote? Because I'm planning to abstain from item 11 with the library contract with the county due to my appointment with Ace County.
Okay, are we doing push-button voting tonight? Are we?
We can.
Okay, but you'll record the abstention from Mr. Prather for that one. Does that achieve what you wanted to achieve? Okay, all right, so we're ready to vote on the other items.
Okay, hold on, Mayor, let me.
Yeah, they're blinking.
Mr. Scott?
The voting button. I know, we're, we're just getting used to going back to that.
Okay, the motion passes 6 to 0 to one abstain.
Okay, um, and as our habit, what we will do is we will do our public hearing and then we will go back to the pulled items. So we are on to item 12. Ms. Trevino.
Hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2024-53, creating a designated permit area under section 82.189 of the San Marcos City Code, authorizing parking by permit only from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM during weekends and public holidays for the area consisting of the both sides of the 200 and 300 block of Riverside Drive and Riviera Drive to Chetum Street, amending the traffic, traffic register to reflect such designated permit area, including procedural provisions, and declare an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance 2024-53 on the first of two readings.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you, sorry, my name is Charles Campbell. I'm the Multimodal Parking Initiatives Manager for the city. The item before you is a petition.
Hold on just a moment.
My apologies, I'm sorry for interrupting. I think it's best if I recuse myself, just I live in the Rio Vista neighborhood.
Okay.
And just for, best for optics, I.
Okay, and you'll fill out paperwork for Ms. Trevino later.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you very much, my pardon, my apologies.
Absolutely, sir.
Please continue.
Okay. The item before you is a petition to establish a residential parking permit zone. Due to increased activity in our river parks, this proposed permit zone is intended to secure parking availability for the residents in the 200 to 300 block of Riverside Drive. The proposed regulation would restrict parking to residents only on weekends and holidays between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, I'll need to do the public hearing and then don't go away. We may need you. All right, I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for, against, or about this item? Anyone? And we don't have anybody on the line, okay. So I will close the public hearing and wait for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Scott to approve, waiting for a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Prather. Are there any questions for Mr. Campbell? This is not the first one of these we've done, so, and we think there may be more in the neighborhood at some point in time.
So staff did hold, did attend an August 22nd meeting for the Rio Vista and the East Guadalupe neighborhoods to discuss the residential parking permit zones and to answer any questions. There was a gentleman that contacted me on August 26th that said they, they might want to join this petition and expand the zone. I put these two people together and never heard a word from them afterwards.
Okay.
We have not heard anything since.
They may still be working on it.
They may still be working on it, yes.
All right, thank you very much. Council, are you ready to vote? I must think that we probably are.
Okay, the motion passes 6 to 0 with one abstain.
All right, then we will go back to item four.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-208R on the second of two readings approving a Chapter 38 Economic Development Incentive Agreement with HEB LP under the city council's open solicitation and offer of incentives to grocery stores to locate in the city that provides incentives for HEB to construct a new grocery store at the southeast corner of IH35 and McCarty Lane in the form of refunds of a percentage of additional property and sales taxes generated by the new store over five years. Authorize the city manager or her designate to execute said agreement on and declare an effective date.
I'll make that motion, but I'll accept a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scott. And I just pulled this because I wanted to highlight it and just celebrate it one more time until the groundbreaking happens. Y'all have any questions? Do we want to voice vote again? Okay, I'll let Ms. Trevino call the roll on that.
All right, Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza.
About time, aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, item 10.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-215R, authorizing staff to negotiate the convenience of the Mitchell Center located at 715 Valley Street to the Calaboose African American History Museum for no monetary compensation, but subject to covenants running of the land, with the land, that the property be used for a public nonprofit purpose. Authorize the city manager or her designate to execute all documents consistent with this resolution as necessary to complete the conveyance of said property on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. I just wanted to pull this because I thought this is a very significant thing that we're doing. It's really, really going to benefit our community, putting that building back into use. And, and I just want to thank the, the Calaboose African American Museum Board for stepping up and being willing to take on a pretty significant task, but I think the end result's going to be great for our community. So I just wanted to see if anybody else wanted to acknowledge that.
Yes, please.
Because it's important.
Thank you, Mayor, and I, I've got to say also, because I'm growing up here in San Marcos, it's about time that we start going in that direction of museum districts and recognizing these neighborhoods that are so important to our, our culture. So this is the first step. I'm hoping that council will start moving to other amazing neighborhoods to show some pride.
We've got multiple museums, and this will be an expansion of one of them, and it'll be a great thing. We can vote.
Would you like the voting machine or?
We can vote machine. Sometimes you gotta hit it twice.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, so yeah, thank y'all, we're on to item, item 13.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-217R, naming up to seven alleys located downtown San Marcos and declare an effective date.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Mendoza, seconded by Mr. Scott. You will notice, council, that this is not complete from what we had been looking for. The alley that we asked for, the getaway, has been set. And it turns out that the committee discovered that some of our alleys that we've been calling it that forever weren't formal name, formally named, so we've got that taken care of. They've added one to be Music Alley and another one to be Imagine Alley. That's the one where the murals change. So there are still a number of alleys left, and there's still some movies that have not been assigned. So, Mr. Gary, can, can I engage in a conversation about where we want to go from here after we vote on this one, but I gotta talk about it before we vote?
Yes, you can do that as far, it's not a, you're not taking a formal.
No.
But it's just kind of a direction to staff on how you want to proceed in the future.
Well, what I, what I'd like to see is I'd like to see the rest of them named, and so I would like to see what council wants to do as to whether we want to appoint a different committee, appoint a council committee. It was an, not really an informal committee, but I don't know how the composition was, was selected for the committee that we did have.
Right, the way this posting is, it's not really set up to go that far in terms of setting up a committee or anything like that, but.
I wasn't going to set up the committee, I was just going to see if we wanted to do one. I'll just put it on the agenda again, that's fine.
That'd be best, thank you.
Okay, we can do that.
I think for timing purposes, it may be easier just to name, since there's seven alleys and there's seven council people. Just thinking out loud.
You're always so clever, Mr. Scott. All right, but we can't do that tonight.
Okay.
Because we, we've got, we're dealing with what's in the packet. So if you agree with the, the names as proposed in, in the packet, and we'll figure out what to do with the rest of them later, we can vote. And the alley will have to wait.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Item 14.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-218R, approving a 20-year lease agreement with Telen Network Properties LTD, a Texas limited partnership for the lease of an office suite for municipal court use at 350 Barnes Road, authorized the city manager or her designate to execute said lease agreement and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Prather to approve. Are there any questions? I'm so happy we have found a space.
And a long-term solution.
Yes, yes.
An excellent job to our facilities team, our real estate team, and Mr. Gonzalez, who worked with Judge Landry hand-in-hand to make this happen. I know everybody is relieved and happy to see this moving forward, so great job to everybody.
Yep, all right, thank you. And we are flashing on the little vote button machine.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you, thank y'all. Item 15.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-219R, approving an on-call agreement with Tetra Tech, Inc., for engineering design bid and construction phase services for the Wallace Edition Subdivision Improvements Project in amount not to exceed $2 million, authorized city manager or her designate to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Was that Mr. Scott? Okay, a motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza to approve. Questions?
I think we're about to break a record. Yes.
We might. All right, thank y'all for being here, we'll vote now.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, item 16.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-20, 220R, oh, sorry, awarding a contract to Economic and Planning Systems, Inc., in the amount of $449,974 to provide public-private partnership services and transaction advice to the city for developing a plan that may include revitalization of the Hopkins Gateway entrance to the San Marcos of, to San Marcos from IH35 to North CM Allen Parkway, construction of a new city hall, redesigning existing facilities and parkland around city hall, and increasing safe multimodal transportation around city hall with environmental protections for the nearby San Marcos River. Authorize city manager or her designate to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza to approve. Are there any questions?
Yes, this is the next step, very happy.
Yes.
Very much so.
All right.
Economic Planning Systems on their project list, they have some pretty impressive other public-private partnerships they've worked on before, so I'm glad we're moving forward with New City Hall, and this is some of those concrete first steps we're making, so good job.
All righty, anybody else? We'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, on to item 17.
Consider the appointment of up to three city council members to a committee to discuss and make a recommendation to the city council regarding developer requested amendments to the terms of the River Bridge Ranch Public Improvement District.
Okay, so I need some volunteers.
Mayor, I'd like to volunteer.
Before folks get voluntold.
Ah.
Anyone else? I'm willing, I'll do it.
I volunteers, well. Did two or three?
Up to three, we can have three.
Okay, I volunteer.
We can have four. Anyone else?
First, city council.
We're on item 17. You good? Okay. Then we have three names forward, which is Mr. Mendoza, myself, Mr. Gonzalez, so this will just be a vote of three for three, so we can use the push button. Oh, do we need a motion that includes those names, Mr. Gary?
Well, the record, I guess just to make it official, but the record reflects.
I'll, I'll make that motion. Mr. Gle, I, I made the motion, Mr. Gleason seconds it, and we have the three names, and now let's vote.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Just trying to stay on the track. Okay, item 18.
Discuss and consider appointments to the Hopkins City Center New City Hall Steering Committee and provide direction to staff.
Ms. Reyes, who's leading us on this thought? Is it you, Mr. Miegel?
It's, it's a board appointment item, but it's our committee, so we can, I think we'll tag-team it together, so I think.
And do we have the chart to go on the Jumbotron?
We should.
Okay. Council, this is where we have talked about, there were some assignments. We agreed that the mayor, Planning and Zoning Commission, they choose, library board, they choose, River Foundation, they choose, and university, they choose. Same thing for Downtown Association and Chamber of Commerce. Those appointments, those have been made, and so next, there will be two council members, and we will choose those. And then after that, each council member chooses two, no vote, that's your two. And then, when we get to the end, we've got some slots that if they haven't already been filled, then we will look at filling those. So while we're getting that on the screen, Planning and Zoning Commission, set Michelle Bartleson. Library is Dewana Goldstone. River Foundation is Virginia Parker. University is Eric Algo. Downtown Association is Anita Collins, and Chamber of Commerce is Paige Michelle.
Good group.
So now we need to choose which council members will want to be on. I'm looking for volunteers.
So if I can step up here, I'm always going to just be a broker record. Rio Vista, born and raised, still live on the same block for 43 years now. I would be honored if my colleagues are going to be on this board. I have no intentions on going anywhere anytime soon. I want to be buried up on the hill. This is my home, so, so please just allow me to be on this board to make sure I make the right movement for all of our people here in this town, so just throwing it out there.
Do we have another?
I thought the last agenda was the three people we appointed. Was this a separate?
No, because the mayor's going to be on, so we can't have three more. It's two council members.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we can't have three, with the mayor on.
I'll nominate Matthew Mendoza to be on that, yeah.
Hey, he has volunteered. Do we have another volunteer? Mr. Scott's volunteering. Is there anyone else who wishes to volunteer? And we will make it, we'll choose.
So we're picking two?
Wait, what?
You already got the two, though, I thought.
We, we have our two, but I think Ms. Garza's thinking about.
Oh, no, I'm thinking about, no, absolutely not, I don't have the time for that.
Okay, all right.
But I'm just thinking, wouldn't it make sense to wait to decide on this when the other two new council members take their seats so they could appoint who they?
We asked that question at our last meeting, or the one before, whenever, and council agreed that we wanted to do it now. That was what.
Oh, can you remind me, y'all, what the rationale was for that?
We weren't too sure how the race was going to go, and we kind of thought, so we sat here and we had a really good discussion about like the groundwork, and we were trying to just, all of us had agreed, we'd been doing this for a while, and we didn't know how the election was going to go. So we thought it'd be more stable if we just all had us as a council on a body that we're already thinking for the few months we have. All of us were in grants, it was a seven to, to zero decision.
And not, not just that, I'm going to be here till Christmas Eve, there won't be a new council member sworn until then. They won't have their first meeting until January, they'll be putting this off for over two months.
Yep.
Just to even start with.
Yep.
But we're having another council member join in a week.
Yeah, but you said both.
This is what we agreed on, at least four people at our last meeting, is that we would appoint at this meeting.
And again, all of us had mentioned, it was more of a, it was a really odd meeting, but we had all said we weren't too sure what the, how the election would go.
What do you mean by that? Like, oh, like. Well, we knew it was going to be somebody new.
Yeah, we, we had all said we weren't too sure, we had thought that it was more to stick with the body that we had now, because we were all in the same mind frame, like we had the same idea.
We were going to have the experienced people do the nomination.
I'm here now, and I want to weigh in on it, it's that simple.
Yeah, and that's what we decided.
I'm just, I feel like it is important to revisit that, just because it's like such an important committee.
And again, I think, I think the only reason we're revisiting is because the election happened.
Let, let me go.
But we have decided to do.
Let me go around the table and see what we're going to do. Everybody wants to do that once again, I'm outvoted. It's fine, I think we should postpone it, but if, if y'all had the votes, that's fine. I just, I honestly forgot.
Yeah, that's what we did decide that.
Yeah.
Are we still?
Yeah.
We're going to do it today?
Dreaming and working on a new city hall for quite a while, and I would still like to weigh in on this. I appreciate that.
Today?
I got, I got an update on this nine years ago during the bond committee, and toured this building for the first time during that bond committee, and I'd like to weigh in on it.
I was leaning the other way, but after hearing my two council members are about to leave, I'm going to go ahead and honor their work that they've done.
Appreciate it.
As well.
Yeah, I don't get it, like, to appoint people, but it's fine, let's, we can move on.
Okay, so we have two volunteers, and we need two, so we will, do I need a motion for this, Mr. Gary? Can I just make a motion at the end?
Just a motion to appoint the list as shown with the addition of the two council members.
Well, we've got more. We've got more coming.
Yeah.
Okay.
One final motion, you can do it that way.
I'll do that, okay. So we're just laying out the plan, and then I'll make a motion to accept what we've got at the end. So we've got Mr. Mendoza and Mr. Scott are on here, and then I'll just go ahead, because we don't need to vote on that one, then I will ask each of you who your two nominees, I'm sorry, who your two appointments are. We're not voting on these, each person gets two, so.
I'll go first.
Who you want?
Yeah, go first, sure.
Your names, please, sir?
And just to give a little explanation behind my names here, it was really difficult. I, I love everybody that's here, but I'm going to be going first with Lupe Costilla. And Ms. Costilla has had just decades here, not to mention she was one of our longest members of the ISD trustees, one of our Planning and Zoning Commissioners right now, and just somebody whose family goes back generations. The other individual is somebody who I'm extremely proud to bring into the city, is by the name of Mr. Paul Coons. He's one of my neighbors in Rio Vista. This gentleman has just, he's the epitome of, of, Hawcoons, yes, sir. Mr. Coons is somebody who uses his bike and his feet more than he does his car, and he takes miles of walks around the city. So this gentleman, along with his daughters, and his wife, and his several dogs, know the in and out of our area, especially just from here to the library. Mr. Coons is also somebody who is fortunate to work with our ISD for our young disabled students that we have here, even well into adulthood. So I think it's very important that Mr. Coons is part of this to give us the perspective of probably the most underrepresented class that we have here in town. So those are the two nominees that I have that I'm extremely honored to put out there on the committee.
Was Mr. Coons on the?
He's on the Rio Vista side.
Yes, he's on the Rio Vista part, look near the bottom. Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, I was, I was confused. So your two is Lupe and then?
And Mr. Coons is part of our, yes, sir.
And you're bringing him up this, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Yes, sir.
Okay, in my head, I was like, we're going down, okay. But we have to choose between one of the Rio Vista.
We just have to make sure there's one, and we could do both.
No, we just need to make sure two Rio Vista people are on.
Oh, so technically.
We can have Bobby and Paul.
No, but technically Matthew could choose somebody else from this list.
Sure he could, uh-huh. It's just two people.
So, does that make sense? Like, you can, you can take two from up here.
Yes, he could.
Yeah.
Oh, well, then.
Because these are already set, right?
Yes, then let me jump in here right now.
The ones that I've read out earlier, they're.
We're good with those, right?
Thank you for catching that, because there's a lot of good names on that list. I don't want to miss people out, so.
Okay. Who's next with their two names?
I'm going to come back with some, well, I'm going to come back with some others. Thank you, because now I'm thinking about, thank you, Ms. Garza. I appreciate that.
I'm looking to nominate Lori Moyer.
Thank you.
I mean, the institutional knowledge that she's going to bring to this project and the dedication she's had to this community, she deserves a seat at the table, and she'll be a wealth of knowledge and information.
Absolutely. I was so happy to see that she had applied.
Yes, me too.
And your next?
What's that?
Hayden says, "Me too."
Yeah, I bet so.
Do you have another one? If you're still thinking, I'll ask who else is ready.
And Lupe was my other one, so I'll let my colleagues go down the line here. She was the one I wanted to make sure was on here.
Can I go back?
Yes.
I was hoping I could. I'd like to nominate.
No, you've got two, and you've named your two.
Oh, I thought I was getting the extra.
No, you have two, and you've named your two.
Then I'm good. Okay.
Yes, you're, you're, yes, you're done.
Wait, what?
He can't be like, I thought he was going to be like, let me weigh in one of the others, because we already have two from Real Vista.
I thought all of these were set. You're saying we have to choose?
Not the, not the Real Vista ones.
Oh, so the ones from Real Vista have, okay.
Yeah, they would need to be named.
Okay, so my initial signing is like, you're moving him up here, right?
And then appointing him back down there as a Real Vista person.
So, then, but then his vote is he gets one person from here and a Real Vista person, but doesn't he still get two?
No, he's choosing two. One of them happens to be a Real Vista person. Remember, we said that we wanted to make sure there were be-
I just want to make sure, like, okay.
We wanted to make sure there were two from Real Vista, but if it happened to be the two got appointed before we finished.
Right, okay. So, then by default, then Bobby gets it, right?
No.
We have to nominate her, somebody else.
No, somebody needs to nominate her, but I'm going to.
Because she's the only applicant.
Yes.
Okay, I just.
Yeah, the list should have been in a different order, but.
I just want to make sure. Okay.
Yeah.
I go next, if there's none.
Yes. Who do you got?
I'm going to go with Bobby, Bobby Garza.
Wait, wait, wait. Don't, I'm nominating you.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, she is very well-known. I guess another one that's been here for a while, and I think he deserves to be on this committee with Mr. John Temitis.
Wait, but I'm still confused.
So, I think we just have to choose, so.
Because now Bobby's the only choice for Real Vista. So, then, so then.
I'm, she's one of mine.
Right, but wouldn't Sal would still get, he still gets his two?
He's got two.
And it's?
And he's actually got two more if I do, if I'm nominating Bobby.
Right.
Yeah, he's got one. He has two. He's got one more, because he's named one.
Right. So, it's Temitis, and then he needs somebody else, because Bobby is going to get, okay, that's what I'm saying. So.
Bobby's going to be on there.
So, Sal would, he still needs to get one more name. Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just lucky I'm going last, because I'm like, you know.
I'm just going the bottom thing like last.
While you're thinking, I'm going to go to this side of the table and see who you've got. Mr. Scott, are you ready?
Well, I was going to nominate Lori Moyer, so I've kind of lost there now.
You need to turn on your mic before you talk, please.
I'm trying. There you go.
People at home can't hear you, and if you go back and watch the meeting later, because I watched one recently, and you couldn't hear half of y'all half the time. So, got to have the microphone on. Yes. Your nominees?
Yeah, I was going to vote for Lori Moyer, but it's already picked. And my other nominee is Scott, is Tom Roach, which he didn't sign, fill out the paperwork yet. So, I'm kind of.
Ms. Trevino will need his contact information.
Yeah, kind of stuck on that.
Do you have another one?
Maybe this Munoz. Eleanor, that was.
Um, hold on, let me look at my notes.
She's a university student.
Yeah, she's a university student, and I have talked to her. She is, she is in it for the city, let me tell you.
Cool.
Is that your second person?
Sure.
Who were those two, Mayor? Can you repeat?
Tom Roach and Eleanor Munoz. Tom is not on the list, but.
Did I talk to him?
Okay.
Mike, will you remind me who you put, so that?
Lori Moyer.
That's why, they're, can we make that larger on the screen? Because that's why I asked that this be put up here. And there we go. And then scroll. There we go. I'll go ahead, and I'm going to nominate Bobby Garza Hernandez and Mr. Mason Murphy. And I do have his permission to note that he is visually impaired. And we talked about, we wanted to have someone who knows about disabilities being on here. So, in addition to the visual, the getting from one place to another, mobility is also an issue. He's worked at the university, I don't know how many years now. He's in career services, helps bobcats find jobs and prepare for jobs. And so, that's Mason Murphy for me. Mr. Prather, Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Gleason, y'all still have one each.
I'd like to nominate David Case. He did submit his application today. It's not in our packet, but he's been a resident twenty-plus years, has an expertise in financing and construction, along with nonprofit service in the Chamber, Fair San Marcos Partnership, and Sights and Sounds of Christmas that I'm aware of. I think he'd be a great addition and a planning and zoning commissioner as well.
So, that makes three planning and zoning commissioners that are going to be on.
They are planning.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just like saying, like, the.
No, but you're right to make that observation.
Yeah. It would be only an issue if there was like four, right?
Four, yeah.
Because then they have to, okay. Five.
It'd have to be five.
It'd have to be five. Okay.
Yeah, I was thinking that, as we started, I was like, how many P and Z people do we have?
I was expecting to see one or two or more of their names pop up.
I think David Case is a great, is a great option.
Okay. Another one?
I was going to let council member Garza make the nomination.
Oh, um.
Ms. Garza, let's have a name.
Barbara Saucedo. And Juan Miguel Redondo.
Okay. I need to spell her name right.
But, Mayor, you get another one, right? Because Bobby goes towards the bottom.
And by the way, Ms. Garza, today's Ms. Saucedo's birthday, so that's a nice little gift.
Happy birthday to her.
Birthday to Barbara.
Those were, yeah, those are suggestions. It's just, it was noted that they fill that slot, or they are Real Vista. Okay, so I still need one more from Mr. Prather, Mr. Gonzalez, and Mr. Gleason.
Anita Collins.
She's already on there as a downtown.
Is she? Okay. Well.
Good. Can you clarify that?
If one of my colleagues has a suggestion, the ones I had in mind have been chosen.
Sorry.
You know, any ideas, suggestions that y'all, someone y'all can trust or recommend? I would just hate to pick somebody's name.
Does he notice it here? Mr. Terry has experience in disability.
Well, he's a former council member, too. That was the other one I kind of was.
Frater, yeah.
Do you want to like take a second to like skim through the application?
Does anybody know this Mike Smith?
I, I do not. I made some notes. Let's see. Twenty years here, former business owner serving residential, commercial, and hospitality industries is what I have from his, notes I took from his application.
Well, I like the years that he's been in San Marcos.
And I, and I go along with Mike.
Yeah, and they think that's long ago.
He's a veteran, too.
Well, thank you for your support in that one.
Okay, Mr. Gleason and Mr. Prather.
My other one was going to maybe be Mike, but.
Um, I, you might want to look at Dan Gibson. He was in our planning department here. He has served in planning departments in other places, but yet he has lived here for thirty-nine years. And if I'm correct, is he a pilot? I think he's a pilot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's not on the matrix.
Yeah, he is. He's one, two, three, fourth one down. Has been in the past, yeah.
I wrote down, Dino Williams. I don't know, I just thought she had interesting lore of like, she wrote down like her family background. But, I mean, I don't know. I don't, I don't know if you were asking.
I was looking for people that specifically said, "This is what I have to bring to this project." There were some people that said, "I'd like to be on a board of commissioners and help San Marcos," but I was looking for specific, you know, what do you bring to the table on that one?
Mr. He's also a fantastic choice. He's just been so very much involved with protections. He's just a great nominee.
Well, y'all pick somebody.
This is yours, right, Mark?
What's that?
It's, and Mr. Prather has one. These have already been named.
I'll go ahead and make, so she does not have her application in, but she will, Karen Ford, a former county commissioner that was involved with the government center, the construction of that. And also, she is an expert in water and building standards to help with water issues. She has an expertise in two key issues. And she's a resident of San Marcos.
You'll be sure and get her contact information, Ms. Trevino. Okay, Mr. Gleason?
I'm going to do Robert Eby.
Oh, from the river foundation.
Yeah.
He's involved.
And bagpipes.
Bagpipes?
Bagpipes.
Maybe play some bagpipes.
Okay.
Can we talk about what they're going to bring to the community?
Okay, so y'all will see on the list up here, that's who has been appointed. And so, the slots that we had left, if they were not already filled, was going to be neighborhood two, which we have three, actually, if we count Mr. Mendoza. And then also, from the handicapped community, and we have Mr. Murphy that fills that. We had talked about not wanting this group to be any bigger.
And can I ask what the totals were on that?
So, theoretically, we could have.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We're at four to where at twenty-three.
We're at twenty-three?
Uh-huh. That's why I'm saying, we filled, we said we wanted people, but we filled those slots, so I'm going to suggest that we not fill those.
And I, and I have.
In addition?
And I had talked pretty adamantly about potentially being put on here, too. And I wanted to see where we ended up with before I pushed the issue on this.
We're at twenty-three.
I would, I would, I would honestly think your perspective would be valuable on it. I don't know how that works, if we can do that, if, like, can we do that?
Well, I wanted to see what council member, and I, you know, I would be off probably before they met for the first time, so I wasn't worried about a quorum, but.
Yeah. They're not meeting till January, correct, Mr. Miguel?
That's correct. It'll be early twenty-twenty-five before the first meeting, January, February timeframe.
I also didn't want to make this too big either. I was really hoping we were going to be under twenty.
Do you want to name yourself instead of Mr. Eby?
Or can't we just like move somebody from up there and push them down to the neighborhood and then keep?
Yeah, we can.
Well, my nomination, Mr. Coons, is really set in, works with disabilities as well. So, he kind of hits all those categories.
That's what I mean. We, we, we didn't want to have it huge. And so, do you want to substitute yourself or your, one of yours? Make a decision, please.
Yeah, I do. I want to be on this. I, you know, my very first entrance into all this was on the bond committee.
So, we're going to put you instead of Mr. Eby?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I like, okay, so I'm going to push back a little bit. I get we want to keep it small, but if we have those extra blocks, like, couldn't we, like, shift it? I do think, I do think Mr. Gleason will bring like a really good perspective. And I know that he likes, talks a lot with different neighbors and like blah, 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 blah. That's why I was encouraging him to do that. But I do think, I mean, we already put the other dude's name out there. I mean, I feel like we could.
So, we're at twenty-three now without any of those?
I personally think it's fine, like.
I know, I know.
It's a good moderator. I mean, we just need a good moderator. Plus, not everybody's going to show up all the time. Maybe somebody will get sick. I don't know. I feel like.
Maybe it is a nice little number for twenty-five instead of twenty-three.
We're at twenty-three.
That's, that's right.
We don't want to need a number, oh, we don't.
Usually not, but.
How many do we have in there?
Twenty-three. No, without, well, with, with him having two slots, and he just needs to choose how to spend them.
Okay. I mean, yeah, I support Mark being on there. I just was trying to figure out a way to remix it to also.
Okay, with that, too. But if you want that.
What's that? I didn't catch that.
Are you ready to put yourself in as your second person?
Yeah.
Okay. All righty. I think our task is done.
Yeah.
So.
So, we at twenty, twenty-three?
Twenty-three. So, to formalize this, I will make a motion that we accept all of these names, and I will ask for a second. We have a second by Mr. Scott, and so, when we vote, we will be voting for all of the ones that we just assigned.
Two big important steps. The motion passes seven to zero.
And that concludes item eighteen. Ms. Trevino, I didn't see anybody signed up for Q and A, press in public. Anybody here, Q and A, press in public? If not, I'm going to adjourn us at six forty-seven, having completed our agenda for the evening.